The meeting of the Hammond Common Council for May 14th is now in session. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the will of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, thank you for the many blessings we enjoy and for bringing us together safely this evening. We pray for the speedy recovery of our council secretary Debbie Jimenez. Please restore her body to health and strength. We ask that you guide us to kindness, understanding, and respect for the greater good of our fine city. In your holy name, amen. Clerk Golick, roll call vote please.
Markovich.
Here.
Spatelli.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs. Emerson. Warple.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Vanez.
Here. Let the record reflect, seven present, two absent. Moving on to the introduction of the scholarship winners. Mrs. Myrick?
Thank you, Councilwoman Vanez. As you remember, last city council meeting, we drew the scholarship winners. And so this week, we have administrators with us and scholarship winners, and we're going to award those. But before we do, just a couple housekeeping notes. First of all, at your seat, you will find that I left you a little cheat sheet for you. On one side, it tells you that we had 158 applications this year, which is up from previous years. It also shows you how we figured out how many scholarships are awarded to each school, and with a total of 15 scholarships being awarded. And then on the reverse side, you'll see that each school is listed, and I listed all the scholarship winners for you, just in case you lost your little tally sheet from last time. And we have a nice surprise with us this evening. We have a member of the Legacy Foundation with us this evening. Carolyn Saxton is here with us, and I'm going to ask her to come forward to say a few words. Remember, my office does the paperwork and the drawing of the scholarship winners. Her office has the big job of handling the money for you. So Carolyn, I'm going to call you forward.
Hi Carolyn, nice to see you.
Hi, how are you? Wonderful to be here tonight, and thank you all for your support of scholarships for students here in the Hammond area. You know, we'd love to be able to give out scholarship awards, and we've worked very closely with the schools here in Hammond, and we're really pleased to be able to manage the fund for the Hammond Common Council. Legacy Foundation, I'm Carolyn Saxton. I'm the president of Legacy, and I really am pleased to be here tonight to represent Legacy at this wonderful opportunity to meet the students. We gave out $880,000 this past year in scholarships, and we love seeing the students who have been awarded these opportunities. And we hope, students, I'm speaking to all of you, that you will stay in the region once you complete your college education and become teachers, and lawyers, and doctors, and professors, and scientists, and whatever it is that they're most interested in. Legacy Foundation manages this scholarship, as I mentioned. If there's any time that any of you would like to meet with me to learn more about Legacy Foundation, or what we do, not just in scholarships, but the grants that we award throughout the region, I would love to be able to meet with you to do that. Again, congratulations to all of you for selecting these students, and congratulations to the students who will be receiving these awards tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn, and I just want to remind our recipients that they do need to fill out that photo release form. So if you haven't turned it into your principal yet, please do so, because Mr. Jacobs over there is taping us and will be streaming over Go Hammond, and so in order to be part of that, we need that release on hand. I am going to go ahead and announce the winners for Bishop Knoll and Hast. I don't think there are representatives here from those schools, but I'll double check. Bishop Knoll, is there anybody here from Bishop Knoll? How about Justice Winfrey? Are you here this evening?
I'd like a coffee.
Hey, Justice is the winner for Bishop Knoll. How about from Hast? Alana Boykin is the winner from Hast, and I will make sure that they get their certificates.
Oh, she's here.
Oh, you're... Come on up, Alana. Sorry. I didn't see you raising your hand. I'm sorry. Congratulations to you. And why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself, where you're going to college, and what you're going to pursue?
I'm going to Purdue Lafayette, and I'm going to study brain and behavioral sciences.
Congratulations and thank you. And at this time, I'm going to go ahead and introduce Esther Goodes, who is my executive director for secondary, and she's going to introduce the secondary principals from Hammond.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Esther Goodes, Executive Director of Secondary Education for the school city of Hammond, and this is my favorite time of the year, because it's an opportunity for us not only to celebrate our students and the accomplishments that they have made throughout the year, but also for our educators, our great principals and teachers, to have an opportunity to see the fruits of their hard work. So this is an exciting time for an educator and to be in education. As I call the principals up, I'd like for you to either give a few words about your students, or let them introduce themselves, so that they can tell us a little bit about their plans. First, we'll have Mr. Wilson from Clark.
Hello, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to celebrate these great young students as they begin a new path, or getting close to starting a new path in their life. And I want to thank the HCC for helping that process out a bit, because we all know that college can be expensive and daunting, and giving a little bit of help to young minds with great talents is what we're all about, and I appreciate that you're about that, too. So without further ado, I'd like to call up Ms. Erica Patino and Ms. Jaclyn Vega, the recipients from Clark High School. And I'm going to ask that each one of these great young ladies tell a little bit about
Hello, my name is Erica Patino. I plan on studying nursing at Indiana University Bloomington, and I just want to say thank you for this great opportunity to help me out through the financial process.
Hello, my name is Jaclyn Vega. I will be attending Indiana University Northwest to major in nursing, and as well, thank you for this amazing opportunity.
Thank you, Principal Wilson and the pioneers. Well, Mrs. Andis come up, Principal of Gavitt.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity for our students. Our first winner at Gavitt is Chloe Barnes. Chloe, come on up. Chloe is a volleyball player, natural helpers, and National Honor Society student. She works at Dairy Queen, and she's going to be attending Purdue Northwest, and she's going to be an elementary education teacher, probably in Hammond. It's okay. Congratulations, Chloe. There you go. Next, I'd like to call up Sierra Bolden. Sierra Bolden is one of our Gavitt cheerleaders. She's a natural helper, National Honor Society, and she plans on attending Valparaiso with majoring in nursing. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And last but not least, we have Iris Ramirez. Iris Ramirez was active in cross-country. Science Olympiad is her thing, National Honor Society, and she plans on attending IU and majoring in bioengineering. So congratulations, Iris. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Andis. Go Gladiators! At this time, I'd like for Dr. Goodlow, Principal of Hammond High School, to come
Good evening, everyone, and thank you. I echo the sentiments of my colleagues in affording all these wonderful students the opportunities they have to further their education. Without further ado, I will introduce the honorees from Wildcat Country, which is Hammond High School. First is Ms. Miriam Villa Gomez. Miriam plans to attend Ivy Tech in the fall, with this scholarship, she will be the first to attend from her family, so it's a great honor for her. Next is Ms. Christina Villanueva. Ms. Villanueva plans to attend Calumet College of St. Joseph in the fall to major in Business Our third recipient, who is not here, Ms. Calicia Sykes. She also plans to go away for school at Xavier University of New Orleans, so we wish her good luck on her endeavors, and thank you once again for this opportunity.
Congrats to Dr. Goodlow and Wildcat Country. And last, but certainly not least, we have Assistant Principal Bill Danko here from the Governor's Mansion.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity for our students. I'm going to call them up and let them share with you what they're doing after high school. So from Morton, please come up, Aisling Gonzalez. Brooklyn Mejia. Abel Cervantes. Autumn McCartney. And Matthew, I didn't see Matthew here. Matthew Bandy is not here. He is our final recipient. So Aisling, come on up and tell them about yourself.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Aisling Gonzalez, and I attend Morton High School. I want to give a big shout-out to my blueprint teacher, Mr. Duarte, for always pushing me. A good friend of mine told me today that it's not about how big the dog is in the fight, it's about how big the fight is in the dog. My senior year was definitely a challenge for me. Everyone always told me that it was the easiest year. Well, not for me. My senior year is all about exams and projects, but with the helps of friends and teachers, I overcame those obstacles. As a senior year comes to an end, I will keep on thriving to achieve my goals, and with this money, I will be paying off college expenses at IUN, where I will be majoring in physics and minoring in photography. Also started my own photography business with my friend Jason. Currently, we are starting off small with our business, posting on social media and passing out business cards, but slowly but surely, our business will be huge. Once again, God bless that I was chosen for this scholarship and chose an honor to receive it on my birthday.
This is Brooklyn.
My name is Brooklyn Mejia. I plan on attending IPFW for primary education.
This is Abel, and I want to say about Abel, I'm very proud of him, because before I became an administrator, I was a first-grade teacher, and Abel was in my classroom, and so I'm very proud that he's graduating, and I get to be there and hand him his diploma.
Hello, my name is Abel Cervantes. I will be attending Purdue Northwest and major in mechanical engineering, and I would like to thank you for this opportunity.
And Autumn McCartney.
Hello, my name is Autumn McCartney. I plan on attending Purdue Northwest to major in engineering, and I'd like to thank you
Once again, I'd like to thank you for awarding these scholarships to our young men and women in Hammond, and I do want to ask the scholarship winners to stay so that they can get a group picture. Mr. Jacobs let me know that he was going to take a group picture, if that's okay. And then, can I do one more thing, and that is, can I embarrass you, Mr. Danko, and let everybody know that Mr. Danko was one of my students at Morton when I was Principal of Morton? So I think it just kind of goes around the circle, so once again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Chairlady?
Jake, would you like to do that now?
Madam Chairlady?
Yes, Councilman.
I have a question for all you scholarship winners. How many of you out there have applied for other scholarships besides this one? It's not very many. You know, there are other scholarships out there, you know, that you need to get with your... See, she's applying. You need to get with your counselors. I went through this with my daughter six years ago. There are several scholarships out there available. This is not the only one, okay? And I know the one girl said that this is the first one from her family that's going to college. There is a scholarship out there for people whose parents never went to college, but yet they could apply for that scholarship. You need to get with your counselors, put them to work for you, and get these other scholarships, because there's a bunch of them that are available out there. It's unbelievable. You can go to Libby, there's books this thick for these different scholarships, and you need to look at that, because there's this money waiting out there for you. Thank you.
Thank you for that advice, Councilman. Jake, would you like to take a picture now? All righty, we'll take a brief recess until the photo is done. So if all of the students could please come forward.
That's a big picture.
Okay, so we will get on with things then. We did roll call. Clerk Golick, will you let the record reflect that Councilman Higgs is still, is here? So we have eight present and one absent. Reading of the minutes?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
Accept the minutes from April 23rd, 2018.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Kalwinski, to accept the minutes of April 23rd. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to approval of claims.
Madam Chairlady?
Yes, Councilman.
Move for approval of claims, April 18th, 2018 through May 9th, 2018, for council meeting, May 14th, 2018, beginning with claims dated 4/1918 and ending with claims dated 5/918. Claim number 2508 through claim number 2928, for a total of $6,735,833.68, iso move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, for approval of claims from April 18th through May 9th, 2018. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson? Warple?
Yes.
Rakels?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes. Claims pass, eight in favor, one absent. Moving on to public hearings.
Item A, ordinance 18-09 sponsored by Councilman Spitali and Councilman Higgs, and ordinance to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department Grant Fund for 2018. Item B, ordinance 18-10 sponsored by Councilman Warple, and ordinance authorizing the City of Hammond, Indiana to issue the Economic Development Revenue Bonds Series 2018, the Gateway Projects, and approving actions in respect thereto.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Public hearings is now open for anyone wishing to speak on ordinances number 1809 and 1810. If you would please approach the podium and state your name and address. Public hearings is now open on 18-09 and 18-10. One more time for public hearings. Anyone wishing to address these two ordinances, 18-09 and 18-10, please approach the podium.
Madam Chairlady?
Yes, Councilman.
For the viewing audience, maybe we should have the city comptroller come forth, or somebody from Planning and Development, to explain what this is all about and what's going on.
If that's your pleasure.
Iso move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, to ask the city comptroller to approach the podium and speak to ordinance number 18-09 and 18-10. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call vote, please.
Markovich?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson? Warple?
No.
Rakels?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes. Let the record reflect, seven in favor, one no, and one absent. Motion carries.
Okay. Good evening. So 1809 is an ordinance to appropriate the funds for the Hammond Police Department Grant Fund for 2018. It is the Summer Impaired Driving Grant, formerly referred to as the Centipede. Operation Centipede has now been, the name has been changed to Operation Sidepee. We get this grant on an annual basis. It goes towards the grant objectives of reducing impaired driving during the summer, and we have been awarded $52,092, I'm sorry, $52,092 to this program. Any further questions on that one?
It's free money, correct?
Well, I would call it free money, but it is not money that's put into the budget. It is in a separate fund. All of the wages and benefits related to it have to be calculated, so we are making sure that it's not costing our budgets any additional dollars.
The starting time and the ending time on that will be?
I could not tell you that. I believe Captain Vikari was here previously to discuss this. It's the summer one, so I think that it's coming up soon.
Yeah, in the main till end of September, I believe it was.
That sounds about right. We get a few of these, so. And then on item 1810, this is the resolution, excuse me, the ordinance to issue Economic Development Bonds within the Gateway area. This is for the financing of the incentive packages for the ATG Development, and also the Project Ice Cube Ice Rink Development within the Gateway Allocation Area. This particular ordinance is set at a not-to-exceed amount of 4.8 million with an interest rate not to exceed 6 percent. We will be coming to you later in this meeting to do a first and second reading on a supplemental ordinance that will somewhat affect this particular one because we feel that we can get a better interest rate and deal with coverage issues on the bond. This particular one, though, is just to pass the authorization to allow us to bond for up to a $4.8 million amount for the incentive packages in this area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone wishing to speak on either one of these ordinances, 18-09 and 18-10?
George Stoya, Robert Dale. George Stoya, Robert Dale, addressing number 10. I, I don't know enough to really oppose it or anything, or make any critical comments. What I am worried about, though, is the impacts on future budgets with respect to this, this particular bond. I'm always worried about the 2020 deadline, and I wish there was more said, maybe something more can be said, with respect to this bond. There may not be any increase. Bob tells me that a lot of these things just roll over, and that things remain constant with respect to what the city's paying out on some of these bonds, not all. But just wanted to know how it will impact the future, the future budgets, and especially if it's still relevant come 2020.
Madam President?
Councilman Warple.
This is a TIF bond. It's a bond issued by the TIF District. It has no effect on our general fund, more or less.
Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance number 18-09 and 18-10? Thank you. Public hearings is now closed. Moving on to communications.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
First, I'd like to announce my annual cleanup in the 3rd District, which I've been doing for a number of years, where I will be distributing bags and gloves throughout my district, and certainly my councilwomen and men at large are more than welcome to join in my efforts of making sure that the 3rd District is clean as well as the city. So we're certainly will be accepting any bags or gloves or anything that you can give in regards to that. And I started distributing them on yesterday, and I will continue to distribute them as supplies last throughout my district. Secondly, I would like to read an agreement regarding the park improvements. Whereas Anthony Higgs, Councilman of the 3rd District of the City of Hammond, Indiana, wishes to improve the parks and the park facilities located in the district said, whereas the improvements of the park facility is permitted, expenditures of the gaming funds allotted in each district councilman, and whereas the Hammond Parks and Recreation Department wishes to improve the parks and the parks facilities located in the said districts, and whereas the Park and Recreation Department does not have significant funds to make the planned improvements for the parks and facilities in the 3rd District. The Hammond Parks and Recreation Department will make improvements to the park and facilities in the 3rd District, including the capital improvements plan at Martin Luther King Junior Park in the amount of $2.5 million, of which $2 million will be funded from the Park and Recreation Bond issued, and the other $500,000 will be funded by the 3rd District Gaming Funds. Councilman Anthony Higgs is requesting to dedicate funds from the gaming funds allocated in the 3rd District in the amount of $500,000, and has authorized the expenditures of the said funds to pay for improvements from the gaming line item by transferring said funds from the gaming funds to the Park, Hammond Parks and Recreation Department. Further, it is understood that the funds of $500,000 has not been, has not used for the project, will be returned to the district. Gaming funds are used for further dates for other 3rd District park improvements as agreed to between the Mayor, Councilman Higgs, and the Park Recreation, Park Recreation Staff, Thomas McDermott, Anthony Higgs, and Mark Heinz, Administrator of the Hammond Parks and Recreation. I'm extremely glad to see park improvements, but certainly I would like to see also some park improvements in Harrison Park, and that's something that I've been working extremely hard at trying to get accomplished. However, this particular bond was designated for certain parks within the City of Hammond, and one was Martin Luther King Park. So, Martin Luther King Park will be redesigned, and hopefully it will exemplify some of the great things that Dr. King did in his quest for equal rights and justice for all.
Thank you. Any other communications?
Madam President?
Councilman Higgs.
The Hammond Annual Flower Giveaway. Mayor Thomas McDermott and the Hammond Park Creation and the Hammond Park Foundation presents the Hammond City of Hammond Annual Flower Giveaway, which will be given on Saturday, May 12th, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The Jean?
It was very successful, Councilman.
Well, I certainly just got the memo. All right. Well, that's it for that.
Alrighty.
I'll be having a date.
You're done with communications, Councilman? Alrighty. Anyone else?
Madam President?
Any communications? Yes, Councilman Rakels.
We had some Morton kids here earlier today. We also had our Hessville Spring Cleanup last Saturday. I want to thank HC3 and everybody that came out, included the Hess Elementary students, the Spring Girls on the Run Team, coaches and teachers from Scott Middle School, assistant principal, and the students, Morton Athletic Girls Softball, Track, and Football Teams, and all the local residents and business owners that came out. It was very successful, and we thank everybody that came out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other communications?
Madam President?
Councilman Higgs.
I would like to say that although the dumpsters are not in existence now, previously, one of the things on being on the council was getting dumpsters for cleanup. And the response I get from the residents when I give them bags and gloves throughout the district is whether or not the dumpsters are going to be placed throughout the city or in my district for the cleanup. So certainly I would hope that my colleagues at some point would revisit this issue and try to get this re-directed in the city so that people could utilize dumpsters for cleanup week, because it's a great program, and that was the reason for me implementing that as a councilman, so that people would have an opportunity to clean up and have dumpsters for that week. So, there you have it.
Thank you. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Moving on to committee reports.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Finance will be bringing out 1810 and 1811. Nine's council as a whole, right?
So is 11, I believe.
Finance is bringing out 1810.
Councilman Spitali?
Council as a whole bringing out 1809. Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
Council as a whole, 1811.
Thank you very much. And as I usually do, I will read the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. Let me see. Tuesday, May 15th, the East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet at 6:30 p.m. at the Ophelia Steen Center. Thursday, May 17th, the Hessville Crime Watch will meet at 7:00 p.m. at the Jean Shepherd Center. Lafayette Neighborhood Watch will meet Wednesday, May 16th, 6:30 p.m. at Lafayette School. South Hammond Crime Watch will meet Thursday, May 17th, 7:00 p.m. at the Hammond Housing Authority Building. I would also like to announce that coming up this Friday, May 18th, at 5:00 p.m. at the Hammond Police Department, is the Annual Police Memorial. This is to honor those who have given their life in the line of duty. It's always a wonderful and moving event, so I recommend that everyone attend. Also, coming up on May 31st, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., there will be Coffee with a Cop at John L.'s Restaurant. Join your neighbors and police officers for coffee and conversation. There's no agenda or speeches, just a chance to ask questions, voice your concerns, and get to know the officers. So that is Thursday, May 31st, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at John L.'s. Also, the 2018 City of Hammond Security Light Program will begin accepting applications on Monday, June 4th, from, June 4th through June 8th, Room 115 on the first floor of City Hall. You must own and reside in your Hammond home, provide proof of home ownership, and provide a valid driver's license or state ID, and you will receive a free dusk-to-dawn security light. Quantities are limited, so it's first come, first served. This is sponsored by Mayor Tom McDermott Jr., Hammond Community Watch, Hammond Community Development, and the Hammond Urban Enterprise Association. I urge everyone to get involved in your neighborhood, come out and see what's happening, and, and learn about some safety measures for you and your family, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Committee reports is now closed. Moving on to ordinance, third and final passage.
Ordinance 18-09 sponsored by Councilmen Spitali and Higgs, and ordinance to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department Grant Fund for 2018.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I move for final passage of ordinance 1809. Iso move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spitali, for final passage of 1809. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson? Warple?
Yes.
Rakels?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes. 1809 passes, eight in favor, one absent.
Ordinance 18-10 sponsored by Councilman Warple, and ordinance authorizing the City of Hammond, Indiana to issue its Economic Development Revenue Bonds Series 2018, known as the Gateway Projects, and approving other actions in respect thereto.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I move for final passage and adoption of 1810.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Higgs, for final passage of ordinance number 18-10. Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I think Heather covered everything, and the question was asked, it's a TIF bond for those districts, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakels?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes. 18-10 passes, eight in favor, one absent.
Ordinance 18-11 sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski and the petitioners, the Hammond Plan Commission, and ordinance amending ordinance number 8514, being an ordinance establishing zoning plan for the City of Hammond in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan for purposes of amending various titles to incorporate provisions for the regulation of a data center.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Kalwinski.
Motion to pass 1811 for final approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spitali, for final passage of 18-11. Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Kalwinski.
This ordinance is an amendment to the city's city ordinance, zoning ordinance, so that it will include data centers from this point forward, and for specifically the site in the 1st District where a data center is now planned. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson? Warple?
Yes.
Rakels?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes. 18-11 passes, eight in favor, one absent.
President Vanez, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance 18-12 sponsored by Councilman Warple, and ordinance to amend ordinances 9363, ordinance 4487, ordinance 4851, 6099, 7429, 7830, 8211, 8471, and ordinance 8845, also known as Chapter 35 of the Hammond Municipal Code, as it pertains to the Hammond City Court and the orderly transition of cases.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Move to pass on first and second reading, and refer to council as a whole on May 29th at 5:15 p.m. Iso move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Rakels, for first and second reading of 18-12, with a committee meeting, council as a whole on May 29th at 5:15 p.m. Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
What about the public hearings that's supposed to be scheduled on June 11?
Madam President?
Councilman Warple.
That'll be addressed. We need to move it into committee first, right? Or can I amend it now?
Amended now.
I make a motion that we amend out on page two under further, be it ordained, we amend out the words "after public hearing hereon and."
Motion by Councilman Warple is there, second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Rakels, to amend out "after public hearing hereon and." Is it "and" as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
This is an ordinance that extends the life of the court for another year so we can clear a case file of about 30,000 cases. There is no public hearing needed on this, it's just an ordinance that extends the closure of the court one more year to clear that case file out so we don't have to transfer all them existing cases to the county level.
Okay, thank you. So there is a motion by Councilman Warple, who was the second to amend out, Councilman Rakels, to amend out the public hearing. Any discussion on that? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That has been amended out. Now for first and second reading of 18-12, referring to council as a whole on May 29th, with a committee meeting at 5:15. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, or do I need a roll call vote on this? No. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item B, ordinance 18-13 sponsored by Councilman Warple, a supplemental ordinance authorizing the City of Hammond, Indiana, to refund its taxable Economic Development Revenue Bonds Series 2015A for the Gateway Projects, and approving other actions in respect thereto.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I move this to finance, pass on first and second reading.
Second.
And move it to finance on May 29th at 5:15 p.m.
Thank you. Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Higgs, for first and second reading of 18-13, with a finance committee meeting on May 29th at 5:15. Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
George, you had some concerns about the bonds. This is one you could particularly look at in terms of what it may additionally cost the taxpayers. Just food for thought.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
It's not going to cost the taxpayers anything as far as this ordinance goes. It's still part of the TIF bond, and what it does, it allows us to transfer over the 2015 TIF bond and refinance the coverage that, the refinancing of it helps us meet the coverage requirements that are required for the new bond.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, ordinance 18-14 sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez, and ordinance to create a new section of Title VII, Chapter 72, to prohibit booting of motor vehicles.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
Move for first and second reading, refer to council as a whole, it's a committee meeting set for 5:15 on May 29th.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Rakels, for first and second reading of 18-14, with a committee meeting on 5/29 at 5:15 p.m. with council as a whole. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
President Vanez, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to resolutions.
Item B, Resolution 18R19, reappointing George Batista to the Electrical Contractors Board. Item C, the reappointment of Robert Garcia to the Heating- Item C, the reappointment of Robert Garcia to the Heating, Ventilation and Air Conditioning Contractors Board, which is Resolution 18R20. Item D, 18R21, the reappointment of Ron Kotsel to the Heating, Ventilation, Air Conditioning Contractors Board. Item E, Resolution 18R22, the reappointment of Ron Lubus to the Electrical Contractors Board. And item F, Resolution 18R23, the reappointment of Richard Spitali to the Building Contractors Board.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Rakos.
Motion we pass 18R20, 21, 22 and 23.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Rakos, second by Councilman Warple. Are we going to do 19 as well?
Yes, 19 as well.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay. So motion to pass Resolution Number 18R-18, hold on, no, not 18. 19, 20, 21, 22 and 23. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Hicks.
Are any of these reappointments here this evening?
No, they are not.
Well, out of all due respect, I mean, I personally don't know any of these individuals, but it would be nice to meet them, so. I guess I could try to make arrangements to try to meet them since they're serving in this capacity. But it would be nice if they would have been present at the meeting.
Thank you, Councilman Hicks. Any other discussion?
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman.
I'd like to have my name placed as a sponsor on each one of those appointments.
Thank you. Do I need a second on that, Clerk? Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote, please, on 18R19, 20, 21, 22 and 23.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Emerson. Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. 18R19, 20, 21, 22 and 23 passes, eight in favor, one absent.
President Vanez, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to new and unfinished business. On the agenda is the intent to consider for 18-11. By virtue of that passing earlier this evening, we do not need to address this. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Hicks.
I would like to announce Who's Got Gang will be sponsored by Councilman Hicks, yours truly, on July 7th because we're going to have Hammond Day on June 30th at MLK Park. Hopefully with the redesigning and the reconstruction of the park, we can get this all accomplished. But certainly, I look forward to seeing the kids and giving away bikes to the children throughout the City of Hammond for this great event.
Thank you. Councilman Warple?
What?
Need to change a meeting?
Oh. I was still worried about, I was going to, trying to decide whether to say I cut my grass yesterday. I make a motion that, I make a motion that since the meeting on the 28th falls on Memorial Day, that we move that meeting to May 29th at 6:00 p.m., just the following day.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Warple to cancel our regularly scheduled May 28th meeting and reschedule it to May 29th. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hicks. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman.
Driving throughout the city and everybody sees a lot of hiring signs. Well, one of the most interesting ones that I've noticed is that in front of every post office, they are hiring. So if anybody looking for a position to work for the federal government, the United States Post Office is now hiring, so you can go in and put in your application.
Yay.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman. Do you want to use, can they use your name as a reference?
Sure. I didn't see the signs because the grass is too tall, but that's federal government property, so I don't know if we can cite them or not.
Alrighty. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Torres.
Like to announce that the mayor's night out is May 23rd, a week from this coming Wednesday at Irving School at 6 o'clock. Like to invite the city residents, especially the Second District. So any, there's a lot going on in Second District, so we, you can ask about it and we'll gladly tell you what's going on.
Alrighty, thank you.
What time is it?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
6:30 actually.
6:30?
Isn't it 6:30? Hold on just one second. Yes. 6:30 to 8:30.
6:30. Correct myself, 6:30 to 8:30.
Okay, any other, go ahead, yes.
Madam Chairman, there's a major building burned down in my district. I was hoping the Chief of Staff would catch us up on that. I know Shama, Councilman Ham, are you up on that?
The Stroud Building?
The Shama or Shama? No? Okay. All right, I'll get with him later. I was hoping he'd give us an update on that.
All right. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Moving on to public expression. George Steyer.
George Steyer of Robertsdale. Not so much commentary as maybe query. We do a lot of tiffing in the City of Hammond and my understanding is that the land that's tiffed or the properties within the TIF district are no longer on the tax rolls. So my question is, I guess a query, I'm trying to figure out an approach to, is there a point where, or have we reached that point or will we reach that point in the coming future, where a tipping point where we're tiffing too much? And it impacts how much money we bring in. I know there has to be development and all that. I know we have to have inducements and all that. I'm just saying. I don't think real estate trendings can make up for whatever is being tiffed or otherwise these different tricks to get back, clawback money that's been lost through the property tax reformation. But I just wonder about Hammond's viability in the coming future. And again, I reiterate, 2020, I don't know, for some reason it's really on my mind and I don't know enough about it just yet to argue or venture forth any contention. So I just wondered if there was a point that the council people, members might be aware of, of when have we tiffed too much? Maybe Heather is a better source for that, but nonetheless, I think the public should know. Thanks.
Thank you. Since George was the only speaker, public expression is now closed.
Madam President, I make a motion that we adjourn from this meeting.
Motion by Councilman Hicks.
Second.
Second by Councilman Torres to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Everyone have a good evening.